I hand them up now?
No, sure. You can give them to Diane.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I'm telling Costner. Anyway, all right, good evening. We ready to start? Okay, we want to make sure the TV, people can see us who are watching on the TV. All right, it's called a meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Royal Palm Beach First Council Meeting for the year of 2023. And I've already been told that, like last year, this year's going to go by quick too, but I hope it's a, I hope it's a good year for everyone as we go forward. So it is Thursday night, January 19th, 6:30. We'll call your meeting to order. Could you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, Diane, can you please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And with that, we have a tremendous opportunity this evening to recognize an outstanding deputy for Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. This is a deputy who is part of the team that patrols and protects us here in Royal Palm Beach. And we're just so excited and elated that he has been chosen this year as the Deputy of the Year for all of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's. So let's give him a hand to Alberto Rivera. I understand you have a few members of your family here tonight? Well, I'm so glad to see such a wonderful turnout. I'm sure your family is as proud of you as we are here in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. I don't know, it was about 12, maybe 13 years ago, we made a very smart and important decision here in the village to have the Sheriff's Office coming under contractual arrangement. And we have Captain Naok standing back here. They have been part of the fabric of our communities ever since. They operate as if they were, in fact, the village police force, and that's what the hope that we wanted for. They have worked hard, and our outstanding deputy here has worked very hard to make the Village of Royal Palm Beach a very safe place to live. That is our number one priority. We want our citizens to feel safe in their homes and feel safe for their children living here and growing up and going to school in our village. And he has been such a big part of that, and I just can't tell you, when I first heard that you were the officer selected, I wanted to go through the roof, and I said, we have to get him in here. So I wanted to make sure we put it on the record officially in the village records that you are being acknowledged and recognized for your outstanding duty and your outstanding contribution. Yeah, you got it. All right. I'm going to ask the village clerk to officially reading to the record. It's briefs, this is a brief summary. That's okay, he's fine.
Fine.
This is a brief summary of the wonderful things he's accomplished this year. I'd like to have that officially run to the record by the village clerk, and then we're going to have a photo op, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Sheriff Rivas was selected for Deputy Sheriff of the Year for 2022 for his incredible drive, motivation, and professionalism reflected through his ongoing exceptional work for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office.
You're going to run for office one day.
Out of hundreds of his peers, Deputy Rivas was awarded the Distinguished Service Award of Law Enforcement Deputy of the Year. Deputy Rivas was not just selected from District Nine, which serves the Village of Royal Palm Beach, but from the entirety of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. The Village of Royal Palm Beach would like to commend you, Deputy Rivas, for your hard work and dedication to keeping the citizens and the streets of Royal Palm Beach safe. We appreciate you and thank you for all that you have done and continue to do so. Thank you.
Deputy, you're welcome to come up. If you want to make any comments, if not, we can go right to the photo op. Your call. I know, right? Perfect. That's his dad. He told me that was his son. Yeah, yeah, so he said, dad, yeah. All right, we're going to call a meeting back to order. Thank you all for exiting so nicely, as you wanted to. Okay. At this time, we're going to take reports. It was weird, we didn't have a meeting this morning. TPA, I didn't know if to do it myself. Yeah. What's wrong? Something's wrong. Anyway, so we're going to start today, I guess we'll start with you, Jen.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be back after a little break. I just have one announcement for the community, and that is, starting two days ago, Veterans Affairs, in conjunction with the Center for Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships, created a policy which allows veterans in acute suicidal crisis to be able to go to any VA or non-VA care facility for emergency health care at no cost, including inpatient or crisis residential care for up to 30 days and outpatient care for up to 90 days. Veterans do not need to be enrolled in the VA system to use the benefit. This care will provide pay for or reimbursement for treatment of eligible individuals' emergency suicide care, transportation costs, follow-up care at VA or non-VA facility for up to 30 days of inpatient care and 90 days of outpatient care, making appropriate referrals for care, determining eligibility for other VA services and benefits, and then refer eligible individuals for appropriate VA programs and benefits following the period of emergency suicide care. The email address is vacfbnp@va.gov, a very friendly website or email, but here's the website, it's va.gov/cfbnp. So, just wanted, we have lots of veterans that we care for, so I just wanted to let them know that service was available.
Maybe that's some of that information, we could put that into vector to make that available.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any else want to comment on that report?
We're still at about 22 veterans a day being lost to suicide, so.
Still, it's still that high?
It's still that high.
That's just amazing. It's troubling.
It's a real problem, and it's a real problem for all ages. It's not just nine eleven vets, so.
Well, hopefully that, we can get that news out so that people can get service and help.
Well, yeah, any additional services that we can, that can be provided, need to be provided, absolutely so. Thank you for that report.
So Monday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and as we normally do, we celebrate it by partnering with CAPSCY. This was their 21st year, and so there was a little bit of a change to the program this year. Normally, what we have is a large number of local youth entertainers who are usually just full of energy, speaking of that, but also amazing talent. This year is a little bit different, so it actually included some professional entertainment, but it really, really got everybody engaged. So as far as audience participation is concerned, I don't think I've ever seen that much audience participation in the cultural center regardless of the event. Anyway, it was over the top, and it was really well done, and congratulations to CAPSCY for doing the majority of the work on that, and we also appreciate the cultural council's support as well as the village. So December Education Advisory Board Meeting focused on the Western Academy Charter School. It turns out this Saturday, they're going to be doing a ribbon cutting, I think we all know about that, at their new facility, which is the old Albertson's Building, which previously was occupied by another charter school, Palm's West Charter School. I'm anxious to see what they've done over there with the energy and creativity that Western Academy has. I'm sure it's going to be spectacular. She talked a lot about the achievements of that school, which are remarkable. U.S. News World Report has ranked that school, Western Academy Charter School, among the top 1% of charter schools in Florida, among the top 1.5% of all middle schools in Florida, and at the, among the top 10% of all elementary schools in Florida. So we're very fortunate to have that school here for, I think they've been here about 18 years now. And of course, the new location is going to be fantastic. They've got a good starting place for it. Actually, that school has been A-rated since 2006. They have a STEAM program, and I know Rich knows a lot about this, that attracts a lot of kids to it, and they currently actually have an enrollment of 575 students. Their plan is to add another 270 students now that they have the space.
They got a lot of space now, yeah.
They do, over the next four years. And so it's another great school that we have here in Royal Palm Beach, and they do remarkable work with the kids. Fantastic. So I had the chance to go to Tallahassee early, interesting kind of a thing. So our Palm Beach County delegation had their meeting prior to the beginning of the session, as they normally do, meeting with the school board, meeting with the board of county commissioners, and meeting with League of Cities. So this year, I was up in Tallahassee, and they were down here. Something wrong about that, but anyway, I was up there with an organization called the Florida Regional Councils Association, just like cities have this association, League of Cities, the regional planning councils have an association that does the top-level policy work. So this year, and they only meet twice a year, and there are 10 councils throughout the state, what they look at is from some of the same things that all of the organizations, including the county organization as well as League of Cities, some of the same categories, but they look at it from a regional perspective. And so with 10 of them, regions are fairly large, but they look at things like economic development, transportation, housing, emergency preparedness, in particular, and environmental protection. They put together their primary agenda items for the upcoming legislative season, which is not terribly different from all of the other organizations, which is a good thing, because together we can have a greater effect, hopefully, in Tallahassee. And so the FRCA legislation focus this year is, you could probably guess, affordable housing. And so their statement is that the FRCA supports legislation directing the use of Florida Housing Trust fund monies for housing programs, including workforce housing. And the interesting part of the statement is they focus on workforce housing and support strongly that housing be located in proximity to workplace destinations, transit hubs, and economic centers. We also got a report from Ron Book, who is FRCA's lobbyist, as well as our lobbyist, and he pointed to, again, the fact that the new Senate President, Senator Pasadomo, has indicated that affordable housing is her number one priority as well. So we ought to see something really happen. That's the good news. A little bit of concern that what we heard was the staff for the Senator, for the Senate President, has drafted a 50 to 60-page proposed bill. And at first glance, it looks really positive and supportive and helpful, but the devil's always in the details, and whenever it comes to preemption, there's always a chance that there is going to be something that'll prevent us from doing something that fits us better than what perhaps the state sees. So there's a lot of work to be done on keeping track of what that bill looks like. It was supposed to have been released this week, as a matter of fact, and apparently it hasn't yet been released, but that's going to be a lot of focus for this particular legislative session. That completes my report.
Okay, thank you. No report, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. We actually attended the Young at Heart monthly luncheon in December, and the mayor and I were there. We actually, we got to sing "Happy Birthday" to Florence, or she goes by Flo, Kermit's, Kermit's, who turned 100 years old. So it was beautiful, she was there, she had some family there with her, so it was really nice to see that. I went to the Business Development Board, had their breakfast, and it was Wall Street South was the topic. So a couple little things, they talked about that Palm Beach County average salary is the highest salary in the state of Florida at $16,800 a year. It is. However, with Wall Street South and the staff that they're bringing down there, their average salary is $500,000 a year. So that explains a lot of why housing is not available in certain areas. They also did talk about that the county has 41 billionaires. They had some speakers that were there that talked about just things that they look for when they're relocating and some things that they found were as concern. One of it was education or space of education, so they're making sure that they have not only quality schools but quantity of schools. So they did say that in order to have a private school, they needed something that could handle 800 cars in the morning and the afternoon. So when they start looking at locations about putting out schools, that that's one of the requirements, just for the space issue and the traffic concerns. Transportation was another issue that they did talk about as well. So as we talk from what the TPA is proposing to do and the transit line down Okeechobee and just things like that, so it's interesting to see from a different perspective what they have going on. The fair is going on now till the 29th, and their theme this year is dinosaurs, so stop out there and see. This year, I did the deep-fried Snickers bar.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, last year was deep-fried peanut butter jelly. Oh, yeah, yeah. I actually, I went to look for the fire department out there just for some resuscitation after all the fried food. We did attend the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, so thank you again, CAPSCY for organizing, and the Cultural Council for sponsoring. Coming up, we have a few events. We have the Food Truck and Concert tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, over at the Commons Park, and it is a Carlos Santana Tribute Band. We have the Green Market on Saturdays from 9 to 1, and that's right outside here from Village Hall. Next Friday, is this too old for you? The daughter daddy dance. You're out of it? The 27th, over at the Cultural Center. And this year's theme is the Winter Wonderland, and then the Food Truck and Movie, next Saturday, the 28th, at 7:00 p.m., and that's Cruella. And all those events you can find on our website, royalpalmbeach.com.
What's the movie?
Cruella.
Cruella.
That's the 101 Downton Nation?
Well, it's not that one, it's the preempt of it, how she got to, how she got to that point. Very clever, but I think it's a little like a PG 13. Yes, the prequel. Thank you.
Bray, you have anything?
I do have one thing. We had a policy change mid-year this last year, and it put us in a position where I need council's permission to shift the use of monies that are already in the budget to another use, and that is, our policy change last year was paying for up to $1,000 for part-time employees or not full-time employees. So that made one of our council, all of our council eligible, and one of our council would like to take a Spanish class, and there's money in the training and travel budget, and it won't be used for training and travel, so I would like authorization from the council to go ahead and use that for tuition reimbursement.
Do we need a consensus, or do we have to vote on that, maybe?
I think consensus is fine.
Consensus?
Right.
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
I think we do have to consent.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be a party at the end of the class?
A test.
A test? More of a party.
We want to hear something in Spanish when the class is over.
We're doing a meeting in Spanish.
I'll say some over now if I need to.
That's all.
There may be other folks who decide to pursue more education as well. Okay, yeah, so we're good with that? Were you going to give us an update on Yellowstone? He knows what I'm talking about.
The season is over.
What's the name of the development?
Tower Royale?
No, the enclave.
The enclave?
Oh, Sunny Isles?
Oh, Sunset Isles.
Yeah, I don't know why I keep calling them.
The annexation of Sunset Isles by agreement with the county. Yes, that's in the process. We did fill out the application, we got it over to county, county reviewed it, gave us some additional information that they wanted to see. We gave that information to them a week or two ago, and it's in the county's hands now, and we will be pursuing that in a local agreement and getting that property annexed.
All right, well, we talked about that, and it's a process, and we'll go through the process. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Manny, you have anything?
Nothing specific. Nice to be with you. Keith apologizes he could not be here tonight, so nice to be with you this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll relay that to him.
That concludes our reports. Right now, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to do that. Any petitions? Do you have a petition? Regular agenda item? Okay, it's a regular agenda, okay, that's fine. Seeing no petitions, I'm closing the floor to petitions for this evening. And do we have any advance statements from the public on non-agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Or the consent agenda? No? Bray, does anyone have their hand raised for non-agenda items or the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
I have no comment cards submitted to me tonight for non-agenda items or consent agenda items, but if someone would like to speak, I'll give you that opportunity. Seeing none? Okay, I'm going to close the floor to non-agenda items and consent agenda items, and Diane, are you going to give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, well, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of December 15th, 2022. Two, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold West Fest at 11600 Pointiana Boulevard, the Royal Palm Beach Commons Park, on Friday, February 17th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, February 18th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Sunday, February 19th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Three, authorization to reject all bids received and opened at 3:30 p.m. on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, for the Heron Parkway Drainage Improvements, PW1903. Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an identity Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend architectural services provided by DHGA Design Florida LLC for two years. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to sign a lease agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and Verdex Construction LLC for the use of unoccupied space within the David V. Farber Building for storing construction materials to be used in the Village Hall construction. Six, consideration of the approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement for furniture assembly labor services with WRK Lab Incorporated for assembly and installation labor services for the Village Hall Office Furniture Project. This agreement piggybacks off GSA Contract 47Q SMA 21D 08PQ at the installation services unit rates provided therein. The total cost under the agreement shall not exceed $122,728.32 funded under Project EN 2304 Village Hall Office Furniture. Seven, approval to contract with Dell Authorized Partner KDT Solutions for the upgrade of core hardware and software assets, including host servers, data storage array, switches, routers, virtualization, and server operating system software at main voice data communication hubs, new Village Hall and DBF. Co-location data centers, current data centers, core hardware, and soft assets are end-of-life, do not meet future performance demands, and will not support 10G local area network LAN backbone at core data centers. KDT Solutions hardware, software licensing, and implementation purchase will be made under Dell Marketing State Contract 43211500 WSCA 15 ACS in the amount not to exceed $95,000. And eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with OpenGov for the implementation of new budget software.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members on council on the consent agenda? Nothing called? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda was approved 5-0. Now we'll move into the regular agenda. The first item on R1 item is a public hearing to consider variance application number 22-143, an application by Custom Pool Construction Services. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 26-62 to allow for a three-foot rear setback where village code requires an eight-foot setback, a variance of five feet for a pool for a property located at 1320 Whitcomb Drive. This is a quasi-judicial process, so we'll have to have people swearing in.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Can you, anybody who's gonna speak, can you come to the podium quickly, and I'll swear you all in? Thank you. Can you give your names to the council when you get there? Thank you, sir.
Armando Presti. None.
Thank you. And Bradford also, you're at the same time. Can you raise your right hands for me, gentlemen? Do you all swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council for ex parte disclosures.
None.
Village Manager?
Thank you, Diane. That's enough. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. The applicant, Custom Pool Construction Services, is requesting a variance from Section 2662 to allow for a three-foot rear setback where village code requires eight feet for a pool, a variance of five feet. The property is located at 1320 Whitcomb Drive. Village Code allows the village council to grant variances when special conditions, circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of provisions of this division would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, will be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this division, and will not be injurious to the area involved or detrimental to public welfare. The applicant asserts that the pool is within the homeowner's property boundary. This permanent structure is not injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare in any way. Village staff has sent out the 300-foot notices. We have not received any letters in objection to this application. Based on the information provided, staff does not support the variance request as granted of the variance would confer special privileges denied to other residents in similar circumstances. No special conditions and circumstances are applicable to the subject property, and the request is needed due to actions of the applicant as it relates to the proposed pool construction. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on January 10, 2023, and recommended denial by a vote of 3 to 1 with Commissioner Adam Miller dissenting. Again, staff is recommending denial of this application. But I would like to provide council with additional information. We have, in the past, granted a variance of this nature in the same subdivision. The applicant also, in this case, requested a variance of five foot for a three-foot rear setback, and I'll pull that slide up for you here. This is the property that was previously granted a variance for, to allow for a three-foot setback for a pool, and that's what this applicant's requesting. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right. Just a question, clarification. May you put the picture back up? We're talking about the setback to the, to the lake?
To the lake, yes, sir.
Not to the sides?
Yes, sir.
So we're not, there's not any additional encumbrance on neighbors in terms of being beyond?
That's correct. And it is maintaining a safe three-foot walking path on the applicant's property for the rear of the property, which is important.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, because I thought that's what it was, but okay. Applicant, like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity for asking for this variance this evening. My name is Armando Presti. I'm asking for this variance on a medical hardship.
Okay.
Two years ago, on September 7, I was in a horrific eight-car pileup on a turnpike in which we were hit from behind, spun around, and slammed into the median. I subsequently broke ribs in the front, and L4, L5, S1 were damaged. If you look at the first page, which I gave to you, that's a letter from Dr. Brett Schlifter, the neurosurgeon who's performed the operation on me. That was December 1 of last year, so it hasn't been that long. And I think the second page is from Dr. Adolfo Milan, in which they performed an EGR test, I believe it's called. I have severe neuropathy, and I'm requesting this so that I can get more than five feet in my pool. If I extend my hands out, it's not even five feet with my legs and my arms to do any kind of exercise. The pool, in my development, you're not allowed to bring any physical trainers or any, anything of that nature in there. It's against the rules. And Dr. Schlifter also gave me a referral for Moat Wellness and Aquatic, which is on Boynton Beach Boulevard, but they don't accept my insurance, and the only other one is in Vero Beach, which is 65 miles, it's an hour and 20 minutes. If I paid cash, it would be something like $700 a month just to go there for the one in Boynton Beach. In reference to the 300-foot rule, you have letters from each neighbor, one on the left, one on the right, from Mrs. Benjamin and Stephen Burdan. They have no exceptions, except, you know, objections about me putting in the pool because it won't affect them on either side. We're going towards the lake. If you look at the thing from Mr. Adolfo, the doctor, the second page, this test was very grueling. They stick needles in you. It's like an hour long. By the time you're done, there's blood everywhere. They shock you with electric things. And it says the electrodiagnostic evidence has anoxal motor neuropathy affecting both lower extremities. And then on the second line, it says the same thing, but in reference to sensory neuropathy. I would really appreciate this. This would be me for a lifetime. This is not any kind of fashion statement. I really need this, ladies and gentlemen, and I really would appreciate this. It would, it would help me out tremendously moving forward in my health and well-being. At this point, I'd like to, if you would allow Greg from Custom Pools to talk here for a minute. He has a few technical things that he'd like to say.
Sure.
Hello, council. My name is Greg Pry with Custom Pools. Since the Prestis purchased the home, they could not buy a two-story home, which would have given me, us, a lot more rear setback.
I was gonna bring that up. Yeah, they got the one-story ones, which are huge in terms of the land. Yeah.
So our issue with developing the pool is they have a porch, and then the wall, the end of the house, which is their bedroom. I have to go three feet off of that because of the foundation. And because of the angle of repose, I have to put a bench there so I don't have to dig deep and disturb any of the foundation from the pool. So this is strictly a therapy pool, 37 feet long, where he can walk back and forth. We have a 400,000 BTU heater, which we need to maintain heat. And then we have, in the spa area where the covered patio is, we have special therapy jets for his feet and for his back in the design. This is not a luxury item for him. Anybody, if this wasn't their forever home, they wouldn't want this pool because basically it's just a long lap where he can walk. But he needs the space, and I'm limited. Now, I got a 25-foot lake easement. We've actually measured from the home to where the stick is in the back. I have, on the east side, 38 feet and 39 feet to where the water's edge of the lake is. Their property has a little bit of a radius as far as in the back, but I need that variance so I can at least give him some walk space when developing the pool.
Okay. I just want to bring to your attention that you've submitted to us personal medical information about yourself. This will be entered into the public record. Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, all right. Before we take questions from council, I want to find out whether any public comments?
No, Mayor.
Prior?
No.
Bray, does anyone out there have their hands up? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R1, so I'm closing the floor to public comments on this, on this item. Open up for comments from members on council. If there are, no, go ahead.
I guess a question for Bradford. Are my sleuthing abilities good enough to say the other variance I heard two years ago? Because I saw something, it was 20-something in the same neighborhood. Is that the picture that you brought up?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
And I actually want a clarification on that also, because I believe we did allow, but they, we made it shorter. So we did, it was with the condition. It wasn't just flat out where they came in and we gave them what they wanted. I thought we said that it couldn't be that, but we'd make the pool a little bit more narrow, and they said, you know, fine, we'll go ahead and do it, then they didn't need the variance.
That was another.
That was a different.
And, you know, to just kind of further that three-foot, we do have developments here in the Village of Royal Palm Beach where a house is similarly situated on a pond that has just the straight three-foot setbacks to the rear property line. This developer chose eight feet adjacent to the pond. That development chose three feet, and so they, by right, they have three feet. And given the safe path of three feet behind between the pool and the property line.
And then just for clarification, because you're telling, you're saying that it's a therapy pool, so it is the rectangular, all one level, it does, it's not deeper than five feet, I'm assuming?
Correct. It can't be over, because he's not tall.
Right. So is it four, what's the depth of it?
It's, we're four feet. Starts at three, because we only wanted that three steps for him to get in with a rail.
Okay.
And then it just has a real gradual, it's only like a foot.
Slope, yeah, so it slopes down to the four feet.
I think it's four foot six inches, because any...
Is the depth?
He wouldn't be able to walk.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just mentioned that, you know, from a point of view of maintaining access to the pond, there is ample space. It's not affected at all, right?
That's correct, sir.
And the three feet to allow people to walk around, maintain the pool, and that kind of stuff makes it make really good sense, but so I've, I've had spinal surgery and L3, 4, 5 fused before that.
Tough.
Really tough, so I can appreciate that. And if you get relief from that, that's great.
It's only been five, six weeks, but this has been injury that happened September 7, two years ago, and then I re-injured myself September 16 of last year, and then it was too much trying physical therapy. See, I was going to the aquatic center because of this insurance situation, so they paid me. Now, my insurance company, they're having...
Okay. I wish you, wish you well with that.
Anything? If there are no other questions or comments, it seems to me that the, this is driven from a medical care perspective, and we have no, we have information here affidavits from the neighbors saying that they have no problem with this, and in light of this is, you know, not something we haven't considered before for other situations. I, my thought is we probably should move forward with granting this variance, but with that out, if there's a consent, so I'll look for a motion.
I make the motion to approve regular agenda item R1.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show the agenda item R1 was approved 5-0, and I hope you get well, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Regular agenda item R2 is the public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1034 and approval of application number 22-124. An application by Urban Design Studios. The applicant is seeking a rezoning of 10 tracts of land totaling approximately 31.846 acres from the village's general commercial zoning district to the village's mixed-use social center MXX zoning district for five tracts of land totaling approximately 9.286, 9.289 acres from Palm Beach County's agricultural residential zoning district to the village's mixed-use social center zoning district located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately seven tenths of a mile west of State Road 7. This is a quasi-judicial process, so whoever wants to speak needs to be sworn in.
Can you, gentlemen, approach the podium and give your appearances, and I'll swear you in? Thank you.
Brian Tuttel, the developer.
I'm Sejong Lee, planner.
Raise your right hands for me. Do you both swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Back to the council for ex parte disclosures.
Village Manager?
Village Manager.
Thank you.
None. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading. I'll skip the introduction that you had just read for the interest of time. Village Council on November 17, 2022, approved the first reading of ordinance 1027, which amended village's zoning code to add entirely new mixed-use social center zoning district. Overall, the proposed rezoning of the village's general commercial zoning district and the Palm Beach County's agricultural residential zoning district to the Village of Royal Palm Beach's mixed-use social center district is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. Zoning code of ordinances compatible with adjacent future lane uses and meets all relevant concurrency level of service standards. The local planning agency considered this application on December 13 and recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. Village Council considered ordinance 1034 on first reading on December 15 and recommended approval by a vote of 4 to 0. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning on second reading. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Does the applicant choose to make any comments? No? You're satisfied with the information provided? Thank you. This is second reading, and it's a public hearing. Do we have any advance comments?
No, Mayor.
From the public on this item? From the public on this item, R2? No? Ray, does anyone have their hand raised on Agenda Item R2?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comment cards this evening, so therefore I'm going to close public comment to this agenda item and take comments from members on council. If there are no further comments, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R2 was approved 5-0 on a second reading. Okay, Agenda Item R3 is a public hearing to consider application 22-152. An application by Robert Fehr on behalf of RP Logistics. The applicant is seeking architectural approval for the installation of stainless steel sculpture to fulfill the art in public places requirement for a property located at 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161, North State, North State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll look for folks to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you gentlemen approach the podium and I'll swear you in? Thank you. And give your names when you get there, please.
Robert Fehr.
Michael Lanford with RP Logistics.
Thank you. Keep your hands raised. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to council for ex parte disclosures.
None.
I was I was at the P&amp;Z meeting when it was presented.
Thank you.
Who's presenting? Okay.
Just for a location question real quick, I can ask Bradford. Yeah. Bradford, just for clarification real quick, because on our backup, where the location of where they're looking to put the structure, that is the one that goes, it's on the north side of the property and the storage units are on the other side of it, correct? Okay, so if you looked at it that way, so Aldi's is up here.
And it's on the southwest corner of that intersection. That's kind of a, at least a three-way, maybe a four-way intersection. Because that's the roadway that goes three-way intersection.
Yes, three-way, yeah.
Right.
Come in from State Road 7.
Right.
And then.
Goes all the way.
So this is Aldi Way.
That's Aldi Way.
And then that's the side road. So Aldi is over here.
So it's on that corner.
On that.
Right.
Oh, Aldi's here, so it's in the back of the property, so it's facing the residential side. It's not facing the, it is facing the State Road 7 side. It's not facing the residential side. Yeah, is that because that's.
Do you have the presentation?
Yes.
If it's up and it's on there, I was just gonna ask.
You gotta accept the as a presenter.
Right. That is State Road 7. Okay, and that's Aldi Way. Yeah, okay. That's what, okay, so it's the store, that's where it's located. Gotcha, thanks, okay.
I'm glad we got that straight, huh?
Can everyone see? All right, so this is the Art for Public Places for the Royal Palm Beach Aldi Way project that we have been working on. The sculpture is proposed to be 10-foot high, eight foot wide, and eight foot deep. It'll be cinched down with a metal, metal cinches, concrete cinches. And it'll be a two-tier base, concrete base. So this is a rendering of the placement of the sculpture. It is going to be composed of stainless steel, again cinched and anchored down using concrete cinches into a metal or a concrete base. And this is just showing a scale perspective of the sculpture in place. This is the lighting that's going to be, that is required by the Village of Royal Palm Beach for the public art. So it's going to be three lighting elements to illuminate the sculpture from dusk to dawn. This is again just showing the anchoring of the sculpture and how it's going to be set and anchored in place. This is just our rough timeline that we've been working with. So February, we are scheduling the fabrication and then we're planning on June for the install. Just a little background of me, a local artist. I would, I have a Bachelor's of Fine Arts in Fine Arts from Ringland College of Art and Design in Sarasota, Florida. I was also the artist in residence at the Alexander W. Drake Fifth School of the Arts, where I taught fine art and photography. This is a recent piece that I did for, commissioned by the city of West Palm Beach that was placed behind the Norton of Norton Museum of Art. Another public art piece that is in the permanent collection at the Orange County Convention Center. Just a background, again, my CV and my resume.
If I may give a little background to how we came to be standing here in front of you. I met Mario and found out that this was a requirement to do this development here in the village. He said I should go and look for a local artist. I went on to the cultural website for Palm Beach and that sculpture that he just showed you that was by the Northern Center, that caught my eye. And I had called three different people. Immediately, I hit it off with him and we seemed to have the same thought on what should be there and what we should do. And I just, to to his benefit, he has worked so hard to get this to where we are right now. And it's been a pleasure working with him and seeing the dedication he has to getting this thing built and put here in the village. That's my point of view. As a developer, public art, what? Let me tell you, I've changed. I'm good with it. This is going to be a pleasure. And I'm looking forward to getting this thing put up, so. That's my two cents.
Okay.
I have a question. What I what I didn't hear was what the, what does, what does the art represent?
So the artwork was inspired. It was originally the owner and developer for RP Logistics has three daughters. So I was working with using the element of using three in some sort of way, trying to make an abstract piece of art with that. And as time went on, you know, the name Transcendence really kind of meant a lot to me in my life. And I think all of my artworks really, I try to inspire people and I try to relate to people. You know, we all go through hard things and traumatic things in our lives. But, you know, going through that and just getting, you know, better through those things, that really is the core of the meaning behind the piece.
That's very interesting, okay. Any other questions from members on council?
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to applaud you for finding a local artist. I'm glad you're here. And I'm glad that the piece you designed and created is very different from the other pieces that you we've seen. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we like being different in in the village.
I love it. So do I.
Let me see if there was any public comment on this agenda item. Diane, any advance?
No public comment.
And like Jay and I'd have just a comment. I'm probably the least artistic inclined person up here. And I found, you know, a lot of this stuff doesn't resonate with me. But at least when I looked at the piece you did, it looked kind of interesting. I mean, it wasn't something that, you know, I think it looks better than the other one over by the school. But, you know, maybe I'm biased. But I I would just like to say thank you so much for for a good job. This is, I think, the kind of thing we envisioned when we went down this path for the art in public places. And I do think it enriches, you know, not only the site but the village. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I just have a quick question structurally. It's, it's.
Let me call out public comment first, yeah. I don't have any comment cards submitted for public comment on Agenda Item R3. But no one here wants to, you want to comment? Seeing that, I'm closing public comment on this agenda item.
Yeah. It's stainless steel, so he doesn't care. Actually, it's, no, it's a beautiful piece. I just had a question structurally, and I'm not sure if this is a Mario question or a engineering question. I know, I understand how heavy it is, but as we put these out, are they also hurricane? They will not be, yeah, I was gonna say that, but they won't become projectiles or a portion of that will not become a projectile.
That's an engineering question.
Yeah, that's why I'm not sure if this.
It will be permitted and will go through the building department and will meet the codes.
Oh, I I figured that. I just wanted to make sure, because they're, go ahead.
We did, so we we had, when the idea was presented, this was an aspect of the sculpture. I spoke to Robert and said, let's make sure that we can provide physical, sort of a plan to make sure that the work is anchored of the cement into the ground. And they, you have, in the application, you have, I guess, just like an image sample of how they're going to anchor it. So once they apply for the building permits and go through engineering, it should, they already sort of have an intro into that. So they'll they'll be able to manage that, I think, I think.
Yeah, I can, I can speak on that as well. The piece is going to be all welded. So when fabrication is going on, it's going to be welded, very strong welds. And for the previous public art piece in steel that I have made, it was anchored by the concrete cinches, which hold that piece down, yeah. So I made sure to make the base, you know, at least three foot high, just to ground that.
So it is anchored from that, thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to say, I think it's a very attractive art piece. I really like it. I think it's part of the character of our village. I think you've caught it and you don't realize you did, but you did. So if there are no further comments, I'll look for a motion from members on council.
I would like to make motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
Fair motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show Agenda Item R2, R3 was approved 5-0. And good luck and we'll look forward to unwrapping it, so to speak.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item R4 is a public hearing to consider application number 22-154. An application by Mario Lopez Pisani on behalf of the Village Royal Palm Beach. The applicant is seeking architectural approval for the acquisition and commission of public art photographs for the cultural center located at 151 Civic Center Way. This was postponed to a time certain of January 19, which is today, 2023. And with that, this is also quasi judicial, so there has to be some swearing in.
Yeah, Mario, I'll swear you in. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And I'll ask for ex parte disclosures, some counsel.
I was still at that.
Manager.
I was still at that planning and zoning meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I have the sort of similar presentation that I had from last time with some edits from from the last time we met. And I'll show you here in the presentation. Table of contents as before, same issue, public art requirement for the cultural center. This is what we spoke in December 15, the last time we met. The cultural center in the Village Royal Palm Beach needs public art. This is the location for the public art piece in the cultural center. Artist selection, again, it's going to be the photographer Sean Padron, who I've been sort of working with the past few months. This is what we went through last time. Photographer Sean Padron is a cultural observer. His photographic eye helps him create works of art that are like sociological experiments, merging the lines between identity, community, and geography. His technique is straightforward while his conceptual framework can be deeply profound. The photographer begins his process by finding an appropriate location to set up his camera. Then he observes communities with a keen eye of a fine artist. Once he settles on a location, he captures community members at random, strolling past the backdrop. He's ultimately chosen. This repetitive activity of capturing passerby in the community is the anchor of Sean Padron's work. This is the selection criteria that was used to select the artist. I believe we've met every consideration in the criteria by selecting him and just kept in keeping this into in the presentation. This is a sample of Sean Padron's work. We saw this in the last presentation, so I wanted to keep it in this one just to sort of get a refresher visual of what his work looks like. And so the village council, as we first considered the item on December 15 in 2022 and provided further directions to staff regarding the desired installation. Council voted to bring the revised proposal back to time certain January regular council meeting. After additional communication with the artist, the proposed public art acquisition now includes one original commission of a time-lapse series photograph created here in the village and one 30 by 57-inch, 30-inch by 57-inch We the People Frame Time-Lapse Photograph in the artist's inventory for a total cost of $25,000. So these are, this is the digital rendering inside of the cultural center of the piece we want to purchase from the artist's inventory. It's 30 inches by 57. And that's a sort of, an approximate visual of what it should look like as a framed photograph. That's in, yeah, one of the walls of the cultural center, I think by the kitchen. And this is a digital rendering, approximate, I believe it's 60 inches by 47 inches. But hopefully we can extend that because this would be a set, this is a sample of what the commission could potentially look like. So if it can be larger, we can, we will make it larger.
What what were determined for it to be, how you determined?
Uh, depends on the, how his photographs come out and the aesthetic.
Artistical thing.
Yeah, yeah. So I I told them, let's, let's make it as, you know, as, as grand as we can for the commission.
So you don't want to be too big, you don't want to be too small. You don't want to get it great.
Exactly.
Go D-Lox, yeah.
And so recommended action. Applicant is requesting architectural approval for the acquisition of art to fulfill public art requirement for cultural center. This public art acquisition now, after the December 15 village council refers to one original commission and one work of art from the artist's inventory. So originally, we had, we still have, I believe, a $30,000 budget for the art. But after removing what we had in the first place of West Palm Beach piece, now the budget's gone down to $25,000 or the cost.
I like that. Okay. I I was afraid you were going to come back and tell us you needed more money.
Oh, no. We had to work it.
That's it?
And yep, so staff is recommending approval of the application.
Okay. Let me clear public comments. Any prior comments on Agenda Item R4?
No, Mayor.
Anyone have their hand raised, Ray?
No, Mayor.
I've received no public comments. Cards submitted on this agenda item, so I'm going to close public comments for Agenda Item R4. Open comments from council. I think this is what we kind of asked for at the last meeting. So let's see if there are any comments or local motion.
I just had a quick question is what attracted you to this particular artist?
I like his sense of community. His idea of building community goes from, so the evolution of his work as a photographer went from taking pictures of people on the street, just sort of random images of passerby, to then including them all together. And if you can see, I can show you here, it's basically giving you all walks of life from a community. So I thought that was such a good and such a unbiased and good way of including everyone in the community, all shapes, sizes of people, you know? And that's, I thought was such a good, it would be such a good representation of, especially for capturing our residents. And in our ordinance, we have a. And in our ordinance, um, we have a detail in there that says, uh, we want to choose something that will live on for twenty-five years from now. So I thought if we could capture residents in the village, you know, in twenty-five years from now, we still have the picture hanging in the cultural center. It's like, wow, look how cool. This is what, you know, village residents look like in twenty twenty-three. You know, so I think that's, that's a really cool idea.
No, I, I think it's great. I just wasn't sure why this particular, but it is very, when you explain it like that as well, though, it is, it is, um, really interesting. And then more of a technical question, because we are using people in the public place. Do they have to sign a release or waiver?
Uh, we can, we can.
That's a good question.
Or because it's a public.
The idea is to take the pictures in the public place.
Okay.
Right, so you shouldn't be able to, but if, the way we want to, uh, structure the commission is to, we'll probably do it when the artists, uh, come by and we'll maybe do it at concert at the park or somewhere where there's a lot of people. And we can put a, uh, some sort of signage saying, there's a public art, um, event happening at the moment. If you'd like to be excluded from this, please. You know, don't, don't come by this area.
Don't walk by.
And if you'd like to be included and you're lucky enough to be in the picture, go ahead and walk on by.
I wouldn't want to put somebody in a compromising position by saying like, oh, okay, we've seen them.
But you're not going to be paid for being in the picture.
We'll let you know when he's taking the pictures.
It was more of like, I just wanted someone, you know, you never know who's with somebody.
Yeah.
That's my read, but we'll see.
I have a couple of questions. Um, just to clarify, and I think we already know this, but just to be sure. This, um, piece that he's already done that we're purchasing, it is the only one of its kind?
No, it's a series of, it's from a series.
Series, yeah.
The flag is as part of a series?
It's, yeah, it's from a, it's, so here, I can show you this. It's from his inventory and this is like any other photograph, there will be one of five, right? So we'll own one of five. There can be two other, three, or of that size, but it's a signed picture. How can I explain it? It's, it's, it's of its kind as a, as a, as a series of a photograph.
But it, it is an original in the sense that the, the photo and the people in it, it's the same in all five. He's not, he won't do another one.
No.
Like for us, with the flag.
Yeah, no. He, it's the right, it's signed, it's titled, it's, comes from the artist's, um, inventory. So that's more or less how photography series work.
Think that might affect the value, future value?
Who knows?
You know how the art, you know how the art world is now, huh?
Um, and then, speaking of timing, do you have, assuming we approve this, do you have a time on when he's coming down?
Yeah, we, uh, wanted to have him around February and March. Uh, more so for the weather. Uh, it's a good time to be outside. It's a good time to walk outside. If I tell him, hey, come here in July and you know, I tell him, come in August and we're gonna sit outside and shoot, he'd be like, oh, you know? So the idea was to February or March.
Maybe he can come for West Fest. He'll have all kinds of people then.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask, yeah, but you're gonna line it up with some of the events we are planning.
Yeah, so that, that would be the next, you know, if, if everything's approved, everything works, the next thing would be arranging with the artist the time for him, the best time to come.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
No further questions? Still motion?
Oh, sure. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that regular agenda item number four was approved five zero. Thanks for getting back to us. Good job.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Now make it so. Okay, agenda item R five is appointment of one resident to the educational advisory board. That would be you, sir.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paula Wilson, uh, to the alternate seat for the education advisory board. That seat will expire on March twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Matt, do we need a second for that?
Second.
Right, we have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no opposed. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R five was approved five zero for the appointment to the board. And we have no further business before us. We stand adjourned. Thank you. That concludes the first meeting of the year.